Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. There's only six faces here on the screen, but Councilmember Cooper, can you say hi, Jim?
Hello.
Is here as well. And so we only have the option of having six heads on the screen at the same time, but we have seven, seven heads working together, I promise you. So, under announcements, I just want to give a quick update from Thurston County Public Health that as of this afternoon, we have two new cases today. The previous two days, I believe there were zero cases. There are now 94 total confirmed cases in Thurston County, 16 hospitalizations, 83 recovered individuals and one death. So I want to commend the community for really helping keep those numbers low. And as part of that, I have a kind of a message to the community that I put together last night and it just went live on our website. As we embark on our fifth week of Olympia's COVID-19 state of emergency, it's time to acknowledge our shared sacrifice and update you on current and future responses to the COVID-19 crisis. First off, I want to thank our residents for showing grit and resiliency as we grapple with one of the most significant public health threats in a century. Our collective economic and personal sacrifices have been intense and the stress of social distancing can be overwhelming. The recent protests on the Capitol campus on Sunday are an example of people's frustration blowing up in ways that risks spreading the virus in our community and beyond and undoing what we've all been sacrificing for these last weeks. I wish I could answer the questions you have regarding when we can turn the switch back on, but unfortunately, everyone's crystal balls have been shattered in the last two months. What I do know is that complying with the State of Washington's Stay Home, Stay Healthy Directive is the surest way to make an impact. The State of Washington is being held high as an example of how to flatten the curve of the COVID-19 outbreak. We're seeing glimmers of hope that should soon allow us to slowly, as the governor says, dial up our most cherished and necessary activities. It's important to mindfully, though, roll out what this new normal will look like so we don't make ourselves vulnerable to outbreak again. In the meantime, the City of Olympia council members and administrative staff are working hard to ensure we keep our essential services running while also planning for unprecedented shortfalls in our revenue. Just like your household may look and operate differently as society opens back up, city operations may look different as well. As we have an opportunity or we have an opportunity to take this pause and learn what does or does not work for us anymore. Stay tuned for information on plans for a series of virtual community conversations on what a healthy, sustainable, resilient community looks like in the post-COVID-19 era. We've done a lot of work in these areas before, but we feel it's important to relook at community priorities through a new recovery lens. Facing a crisis can remind us of the things we value most. We want to hear what you value most. I look forward to working with you and rebuilding the future together. We've got this. Thank you. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thanks. All right, we have an agenda for this evening, which takes us right to public comment. So with these virtual or remote meetings that we're holding, we cannot have live public comment at this time, so we've been asking our community to take one extra step and go to our website, olympiawa.gov. And on the landing page, there's a link to what's called Engage Olympia, and that's a tool that we use to hear from our community. And we're using it now for our public comments. So this evening, we just received one public comment and from a resident who we've already responded to. So if there's anything else that the council has to add regarding public comment tonight? Nothing? All right. So we really do want to hear from you, especially, we're lonely, you guys, so please tell us what you're thinking and use that Engage Olympia tool. Moving on, I need a motion to accept tonight's consent calendar.
So moved?
Second.
Right. Any questions, comments, or polls?
I'd like to comment.
Councilmember Rollins, followed by Councilmember Partially, followed by Mayor Portem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor. Looks like I'm in some company. I would like to poll for separate comment, or not separate action, but just comment for B, for C, and for E.
For C and then E. Okay, and these are just for comments, so you can act on the whole slate at the end. All right, yeah. Councilmember Partially?
I just want to also just comment on 4C.
Okay, excellent. And then Mayor Portem Bateman?
Comment on 4B.
And Mayor Selby?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm making notes.
That's fine. I would like to ask a question about 4E and a comment on 4F.
Okay. Making all these notes. Anybody else? Okay, so let's start at the top. We'll go with item 4B. We had remarks from Councilmember Rollins and Mayor Portem Bateman. You want to state what the, what the item is, too?
Oh, great, yeah. I wanted to comment on 4B, the Familiar Faces Grant that we are voting to accept. And just to congratulate our team, especially Ann Larson and the whole Familiar Faces team doing great case management and outreach work in our downtown. And also to let anyone in the public who would like to learn more about that program, we're going to get more of an in-depth update on that tomorrow at our General Government Town Hall that we're virtually convening, which is at 4:00. And you can get more information on that at the main city website and just look for the section on the front page about virtual town halls to learn more about Familiar Faces and some other items.
Okay, I just, I want to go, kind of go back up and say that 4B was approval of a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funding from Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs for expansion of the Familiar Faces Program. Sorry, I should have led with that. And then I've also got Mayor Portem Bateman?
Thank you.
You froze, Jess?
It passed in the legislature and the grant is through the Arrest and Jail Alternatives Law Enforcement Grant Program.
Mayor Portem Bateman, you froze, and so we missed like the first couple sentences?
This, I think my internet speed is not very good right now. So this is a grant that's made available through a bill that passed in the legislature. It's the Arrest and Jail Alternatives Law Enforcement Grant Program, and it's adding four peer navigators, a program manager, a mental health professional, and then a part-time support position. And this is going to further enable us to work to divert individuals out of our criminal justice system by building relationships and connecting them to services. I also want to commend staff for getting this grant, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about the program tomorrow for the General Government Committee.
Great, thank you. Anybody else on item 4B? All right, we'll go to item 4C, which is approval of a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the City of Olympia and the Lot Clean Water Alliance for Public Health Emergency Support Funding. And I have comments from Councilmember Partially and then Councilmember Rollins.
I just wanted to call attention to this, partly to applaud the Lot Administrative Services. They've got the resolution to us for the interlocal agreement that will allow us to buy the sanitation trailer. This is really court work. And I just want to thank them and thank the rest of the boards, as well as the jurisdictions, for going and approving this trailer for us. And we potentially have room for one more trailer, should we need it and the crisis continues. I just wanted to call out and say thank you to all of the Lot Administration and the board.
Excellent. And Councilmember Rollins?
Thank you. I would echo that and appreciate the contributions from Lot. And because it's going to our mitigation site downtown, I also wanted to extend the invitation to the public who may like to hear general updates about the mitigation site and the new management, which is also happening at the General Government Virtual Town Hall tomorrow at 4:00. So hope we'll have a lot of participants there to learn more with us and ask questions through our moderator. That's it.
Great. Anybody else on item 4C? Okay, item 4E, I've got Councilmember Gilman.
4E, which is approving the renaming and readdressing of the north-south leg of Stoll Road to Franz Anderson Road Southeast. And my question was whether we had reached out to the Anderson family. I was honored to see that several of the neighbors wanted to recognize the family who had first farmed on that stretch of road. And I was just wondering whether or not staff had reached out to the family to get their blessing for that.
Would you like me to comment, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, because I'm, sorry, I was, I don't know whether we did. Jay, I'm just so used to you being right there jumping in.
Sorry about that. So I see that Jessica's not on the call, but my understanding is that there was outreach to the family and discussions with the family about this process of naming, along with the other residents along the stretch who are all in approval of this. So that's as much detail as I have. I do know there was some outreach that happened.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Jay. That's terrific.
All right, and I think there might be some future discussion around policy, you know, a process for renaming streets? I think Councilmember Rollins?
Yeah, I can kind of make my, my comments now. Yeah, I I had questions about, about process, just since we, there's been, the topic of naming has come up a lot in the last few years. Instances I know about being like the alleys in downtown. I know there was some, some feedback we'd gotten from Squawson Island Tribe about that naming, as well as there was a referral to look at naming a street after Martin Luther King Jr. in the city that was made to Heritage Commission. So I was curious and I would, would like, would like to request a referral from staff about, about naming policy, particularly for streets, because my understanding is we don't have a policy right now. And there's a lot of good opportunity for learning about history and reparation reconciliation through naming processes. So those are my comments on 4E.
And we have a very robust Heritage Commission that loves to do that kind of work, too, and can maybe be one of the ways that we can do that more mindfully in the future. All right, anybody else on, on item 4E? Item 4F, I've got Councilmember Gilman, and that's approval of an ordinance to establish a process to add a pool of citizen representatives to assist with investigations pursuant to State Initiative 940.
Good. So we had a recent work session where we discussed the city's efforts to comply with Initiative 940 and, and actions the police department's taking. And I just wanted to make sure and recognize that this is a significant step to create a, a pool of a half dozen citizen representatives who we would ask in any, any incident of of force, but use of force by a police, by the police, to have two of those citizen representatives join the independent review of that, that incident. So I think it's a big step forward and I appreciate our passing that tonight.
All right, any other comments? Item 4F, all right, I think we're ready to take the vote. All in favor of approving tonight's consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is adopted. We have one item on other business this evening. I also want to just kind of, if there's people out there watching, we are trying to keep our agendas really tight, just to business that needs to be done urgently. And so that's why we don't have a lot of extra items on our agendas at this time. We'll be gradually building back up as, as we're able to do that in a way that we can get more community input. So these are items that are ones that we can do without hopefully too much controversy and are more of a timely nature. So just want to let you know, that's why our meetings are really short right now. Okay, other business, item 6A is approval of an ordinance amending the City of Olympia zoning map to rezone the Stoll Road property. And I sorry, I would like to invite Lydia Morehead. She is an associate planner in community planning and development. And whether she's going to be joining us on screen, or is she going to be moderating or facilitating out in the ether?
I could jump off if we need to put another face up.
I think sometimes it's, it is helpful to see the speaker, if that's okay. If you're okay with that, Danny, and then we can rotate back out, maybe. All right. All right.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Lydia. Can we see you? So wait, do you want to be seen?
Oh, there we go.
There you are.
Hi. Hi there. I apologize. When I share my screen, I can't see you. But you should be able to see me.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and share my screen for you. Okay. So what we have here is a site-specific rezone application that has come to you.
Can it be any bigger, Lydia? I'm sorry, can it, can it get a little bit bigger?
Oh, but let me try here. And let's see if I can get, how's that?
Way better. There you go.
Oh, good. Okay, so this is a site-specific reason request located in the northeast portion of the city near Martin Way and Lilly, an area of the city that was annexed in 1970. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning of two parcels totaling 0.96 acres in size from manufactured housing park to high-density corridor four. A site-specific zone map amendment or rezone, they are typically accepted two times a year and they take approximately six months for a decision. The review process includes a staff-level review with environmental review through SEPA, Planning Commission review for consistency with a comprehensive plan, hearing examiner review, who holds an open-record public hearing, and then makes a recommendation to the city council, and then city council ultimately makes the final decision. The Local Project Review Act allows for only one public hearing with testimony taken at one time. Your packet contains the hearing examiner's recommendation to you, which contains the record for which you will base your decision. This application was submitted in September 2019. Notice of application was issued on October 21st, 2019. The Olympia Planning Commission reviewed this and recommended that the proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan in January. The hearing examiner held an open-record public hearing on February 23rd and then issued his recommendation to the city council on February 28th. This application includes two parcels located here, 414 and 422, Stoll Road Southeast. They're currently zoned, Manufactured Housing Park. And the current zoning in the area includes HDC 4 along Martin Way and General Commercial to the south. The Manufactured Housing Park Zone includes the existing Horseshoe Trailer Lodge and four other parcels along the western side of the Horseshoe Trailer Lodge, two of which are included in this proposal. As you can see, 3,500 Stoll Road here was rezoned from Manufactured Housing Park to General Commercial in 1999. The applicant proposes to rezone the site High Density Corridor 4. Again, the site is right here. The general land use surrounding the site includes office and medium-to-low-density residential. Properties to the south and west include single-family homes and properties that are undergoing redevelopment into multifamily housing by the applicant of the rezone proposal, Four Street Housing LLC. The Manufactured Housing Zone allows for manufactured housing parks on sites greater than five acres in size and on individual lots in addition to single-family duplexes and townhouses at densities between five and 12 units an acre. The proposed HDC 4 Zone allows for a compatible mix of commercial office and high-density multifamily residential uses. The site and the surrounding area are designated as urban corridor with a high-density neighborhood overlay on the future land use map. And the Olympia Municipal Codes has specific criteria for rezone requests. The hearing examiner's recommendation, which is attachment two in your packet, discusses the proposal's compliance with each criteria in detail. And the hearing examiner found that the proposed rezone meets the rezone decision criteria and recommended that the city council approve the rezone request. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions from the council?
I have a question. So there's currently manufactured housing on the parcel?
No, there's a manufactured housing park directly east of the site.
Okay, okay.
The two parcels involved, one of them, the smaller one to the north, has a single-family home, and then the one to the south is vacant.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And there were no, I think you noted that, that when they did the public hearing, there was nobody in opposition to the rezone?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just based on our consent calendar, will that now be the new, really renamed road that it will be on?
It will, yes. And it has been confusing because there are two Stoll Roads, so.
Yeah. Well, we solved that tonight, at least. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the ordinance amending the City of Olympia zoning map to rezone the Stoll Road property from Manufactured Housing Park to High Density Corridor on First and Forward to Second.
I second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much, Lydia.
Thank you.
And so we are on to council reports, and I don't have anything. I'm going to let our chairs of General Government and Land Use talk about your, your your town halls that are coming up, so I'm going to defer to that. And so just for my sake up here, I'm just going to start with the screen view I have. And if Mayor Portem Bateman or Councilmember Cooper want to pop back in. Okay, so then Jim, you'll be last. I'm sorry, Councilmember Cooper, you'll be last.
Got it.
All right, Councilmember Partially?
I have just heard your report tonight.
All right, Councilmember Rollins?
Oh, great. I just wanted to mention again, the General Government convened virtual town hall, which is happening tomorrow, the 22nd, at 4:00, 4 to 5:00. And then our regular General Government meeting is at 5:00. But if you would, if you're interested and able to attend the virtual town hall, you can sign up. Just go to olympiawa.gov and on the main page, look for the virtual town halls and click and follow the instructions. But we're going to be discussing the housing and homelessness response, specifically our immediate homeless response plan, how we're working with different partners, including Keely Marinou from the county will be on the panel, as well as Gabe Ash from Catholic Community Services to update us about the mitigation site. And Keith Staley, of course, our interim city manager. As well, we're going to be able to hear more about the Familiar Faces Program and just how the different partners are tackling the unique needs and responses necessary within the homeless community regarding COVID-19. So hope to see you all at the town hall. Oh, and I do want to mention, just to save the date, and we'll get more information out, but Wednesday, May 13th, General Government is also going to convene kind of a council conversation about what recovery is and what recovery could look like in this community. The idea is for the seven of us to just be able to have a conversation about what we're hearing and seeing in the community, in this community and beyond, and not just in our role as council members and board members of this organization, but really as community leaders that have, have a lot of contacts throughout the community and a lot of people with, with really big visions. So just a place to put those on the table ahead of our council retreat, which will be the following month. So look for more information about that in your inbox with your colleagues and going out to the rest of the community in the normal routes, Facebook and email blasts. But that'll be May 13th.
All right, any questions for Councilmember Rollins? Or Councilmember Partially?
That's the night of the Lot Board BD.
Okay, well, what, what time does that start?
At 5:30 usually gets done by 7, 7:30.
Okay, great. We'll work with that. I checked, I checked with staff about conflicts and it seemed like that was going to be okay, but I'll double back, double back. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure. Yeah.
That sounds like a study session. Can we do it on a Tuesday night?
I'm, we could. I've, I checked in with, with staff and, and members about just having it convened as General Government. And so that, I mean.
I'm looking at.
Sorry, I just, this is new, so I, I'll talk with you offline. I just popped into my head, so.
Okay, yeah, and I'm looking at the upcoming agendas and yeah, so we're not, sorry, I'm being too casual, I'm just.
That's okay, we're just chatting.
Yeah, Councilmember Rollins, I'll let you work with city manager Jay Burney, figure out whether we can do it Tuesday or a Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
Between 4:00 and 5:00. Since our council meetings are 5:30.
Right.
All right. All right, we'll move on. Councilmember Gilman?
Yes, as, as you alluded to, a week from Wednesday, on the 29th, the Land Use and Environment Committee will be hosting another one of these virtual town halls at 4:00 PM on the 29th, focused on resources available for renters and for mortgage payers. And we're still confirming a panel of speakers, but that's, that's coming your way in a week with more details to be announced, both through the press release, the last ones have been in the Olympian, and as, as Councilmember Rollins mentioned on the homepage of the city. So, so that's available. And then I just wanted to acknowledge, the spring is in the air and there's been more frustration about being housebound and masked and all this. I, I hope folks are still willing to follow the advice of the public health officials and the medical community. And I just wanted to say that in our own personal disruptions, yesterday was our granddaughter's first birthday and we had a Zoom chat with her as she opened gifts. Not quite the same. And this afternoon, we dropped my mom off at St. Pete's, assuming we'd go in and sit with her for the hours it takes to get through the emergency room and all that, like usual. And I had forgotten that the moment you get to the door, they say only the, the patient allowed through the door. So that was just a couple of reminders of how different it's been for me this, this last day. So, so be well, be safe.
Thanks for sharing those, Councilmember Gilman. Everyone's, you know, is sacrificing in so many ways that we never imagined. And so thank you for sharing those personal stories. Councilmember Madron?
I have a question for Clark. Did you want to say anything about the, what we covered in the land use meeting last week in your update?
Um, well, you know, I, I did. Um, well, you know, I, I did not prepare that.
Okay, I was going to make a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just didn't want, I just.
You're up, and please give a report on the land use meeting, that'd be terrific. Thank you, Danny.
Well, and the major point I wanted to hit on in terms of what we talked about in the last land use meeting was we're continuing the conversation around potential rental regulations, and we have directed staff to draft some ordinance about what something could look like for the city in terms of just cause and extended eviction time for people who are evicted within the just, a just cause type ordinance. So there is some forward movement on that. We're also looking at the housing code amendments that unfortunately, the planning commission meeting where that, they were going to discuss that got canceled. So it came to land use first, then it will go to the planning commission. And, and so there, there's still other business of the city that we're working on that is not at all related to a pandemic. And the downtown design guidelines also came in front of us. So just wanted to let people know some of the things that we're continuing to work on as we can in this, in this new fashion that we're doing things.
All right, any questions for the land use committee? All right, thank you, thanks for sharing that. Mayor Portem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Silby, I have nothing to report.
And Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Cooper, you can come back, there you are.
There we go, thank you, two of my colleagues left me, and thank you very much. So sorry for my quick reaction on scheduling for the, for the conversation about recovery. I think it's a very important conversation. I just happen to have finance committees every other week right now, and it's a lot of Wednesdays, so I would prefer to keep council conversations on Tuesday if we can. But just wanted to explain my, my reaction. So just a couple of quick updates, last Wednesday, we had a town hall meeting for small businesses, and it was fairly well-attended, and we heard some good feedback. I'm hopeful that those previous town halls will get posted, the recordings, because I think they're relevant information for people. Sort of in a slight relation to that town hall for people who are paying attention to the payroll protection program, the US Senate passed another $329 billion today to go towards the PPP, and there's hope that that will go from the House very soon and, and get that program funded up again, so. Also, we had our finance committee meeting, and we looked at the lodging tax. So as you can imagine, lodging tax has come to a grinding halt, pretty much. The current hotel capacity in Olympia is sitting at about 20%, with 30% of that being long-term stays that don't pay lodging tax. And so with a decline in lodging and a delay in when the state will collect and, and remit that lodging tax back to the city, it's likely to be a few months before we have a real picture of that landscape. But we're projecting and doing scenarios around a 25%, 50%, and even 75% reduction in lodging tax. So the finance committee talked a little bit about the options, and the city manager is working on a recommendation to, that him and I'll touch base on, and then he'll bring it to council, I think, in, in two weeks for, for action around what to do with our current, because we have contracts out for the lodging tax to a bunch of current organizations, but we won't be able to meet that obligation. So that will be coming. We also heard from the Washington Center and had the executive director Jill Barnes on to talk to us a little bit about their, really their continued recovery from the last recession. And, and then to have that come to a grinding halt in front of them as the, the stay-at-home orders and the no gathering orders came into play. And I just have to say, we are very lucky to have Jill and her team running the Washington Center, and I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that it'll be back, and it'll be back in full force. But it'll probably take some support from our community, from the city, to keep it and the other arts organizations in the community standing up after, after, after this is all over. So just want to let you know that there will be, they did make some asks, and that will come probably as a part of the city manager's recommendation around the lodging tax in the next couple of weeks, so keep an eye out for that. The last thing is that the finance committee made a unanimous recommendation to the city council, and that should be coming at our next meeting, to, to reallocate, so we have $175,000 set aside for policy analyst work in our budget. On top of that, we have our council goal money. And the, the committee is recommending unanimously that we free up that $175,000 for the, for the analysts and let it go back to the general fund, so that it's available to the, to the city manager to balance the 2020 budget, which will likely have a much larger hit to it than $175,000. So just wanted to make you aware of that, so that you know that'll be coming on consent probably in two weeks, so we can, can get that taken care of. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper, lots of difficult decisions currently being made and many more ahead of us. Any questions for Councilmember Cooper? All right, I just want to add that, before I turn this over to Jay Burney or the city manager, is we will not have a business meeting next Tuesday night, but as you can hear, council is still working really, really hard on, on our response to the crisis and through all of our other committee work, either in our inter-jurisdictional obligations as well. So even though we won't be meeting next Tuesday night in this format, the work continues. And so here's Jay Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple of quick items. One, I just wanted to confirm, follow up on Councilmember Cooper's report, that we will be bringing the recommendations for LTAC and Washington Center and the council policy analyst dollars forward on your May 5th agenda, so you can expect to see those there. And then just one additional follow-up related to the $175,000 and the revenue impacts on the city's operating budgets. We're going to bring the first discussion on that to the finance committee at their next meeting on April 29th. We'll, we'll take our first look at the expected revenue shortfalls that, that we're looking at in terms of the COVID-19 impacts and a plan and a process for how we will start to address those. So we'll have the first conversation on that on April 29th, the finance committee, for anyone in the community that wants to tune in. And with that, that is my report.
All right, nothing, no further business before the Olympia City Council, thanks for attending, we are adjourned.